That is top my wife, Ross. You can go ahead.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the July 25th, 2024 meeting of the Culver Town Council. Before we get started, a couple of housekeeping items. This meeting is being recorded and your participation is your consent to be or recorded and rebroadcast on the town's YouTube channel. Also tonight in the room is Anita Goodwin from WKBI.
I appreciate that.
If you have a cellphone or electronic device, if you'd be kind enough to turn it off or put it on airplane mode, I'd appreciate it. First item is roll call, please.
William Clavenger.
Present.
Jenny Monroe.
Here.
Dana Neer.
Here.
Kelly Rouchardi.
Here.
Please join me for the quad of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on is the approval of the minutes of the July 11th meeting. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes and addition or corrections. If not, entertain a motion.
I'll second.
Removed by Mr. Neer, seconded by Ms. Rouchardi. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Thank you. Anyone in the room as a guest speaker tonight? Anyone in the room of public concern, utility, ordinance, or violation, or appeals? Yes, sir.
Karen Chesley, 520 South Plymouth. I've mentioned this before, but I thought I'd go on record to be a little concise with it. My concern is with the area around Batabano and Epispo. I don't know if everybody's familiar with that area, but it seems to be a neglected spot and is becoming more so over time, and I don't know why. There, it is a gateway to our community. If you look at traffic that comes from the west shore of the lake, ninety percent of it, unless it's a truck, is going to go down Batabano-Epispo and head to South Plymouth and so on. It's such an eyesore that I feel compelled to bring it to your attention, more specifically. The first concern would be Batabano Street between South Main and Epispo. When it rains, that street literally floods six, eight inches and stagnates. Water just does not drain from that area. There has been work on a drain, rebuilt, new drainage, manhole cover, new pavement, yet there's no flow of water out of that area. In addition to that, there's been so much overflow of water that it's eroding the south side of that street and sidewalk. And I implore the committee to take a look at this seriously. It's just, it's awful. You can, after a good rain, it'll be a day before that will drain and dry. In addition to that, we have vacant lots in that, in that intersection on Batabano. Maybe it's, that dress is Akron, but Akron's almost an alley. There's a vacant lot. House was recently torn down. That property, it is a Collins property, I believe, and it's just not being kept. Grass is waist high. Next to that property on Epispo is 821. That is a new construction. That lot has been neglected. Seriously, waist-high grass as well. Further down on Batabano is, Batabano corners around to make South Plymouth. There is a residence who does not mow his lawn. I've been here for a couple of months this summer. That lawn hasn't been touched. It's also waist-high. Going south on Epispo, you have the Munster House. And God knows, I have been talking about this house for eight years. I'm embarrassed and I'm really frustrated. I've had two building inspectors look at that house. Both have agreed that it is in violation of the ordinances in this community, yet it still stands untouched for eight years now.
Specifically what ordinance are, are you talking about construction ordinance?
Unsafe building ordinance.
Is the current, the current building has said that, that it's unsafe?
Yes.
Or unsafely?
Agreed with me that it needs attention. It needs to be declared abandoned, unsafe, and motion.
I just want to be sure that I'm clear when I talk to Steve about that.
205 Akron.
Are you talking about Steve or the county inspector?
Two Culver inspectors.
He's referring to Steve, I think, right?
And.
And that's 205 Akron, because I'm going to talk to him on Monday, but thank you.
You can't miss the house.
No.
Across the Akron.
And you're referring down South Plymouth on the corner where they, wildflowers grow. The rest of the yard is mowed and he's kept that, and I've stopped and knocked this week, but we'll have that conversation later.
That's been going on for years.
It has, it has been a discussion. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Just for the record, Chuck DeWitt never wrote that up as an unsafe building, though.
Just saying, he and I.
The grass nuisance for it, that sort of thing.
Conversation. And we walked the house. We walked the yard. And I said, help me understand this. Why is this house still here? It's an absolute disgrace to the community, yet it's on the south side of town and no one seems to care. I'm just tired of bringing this up. It's, you go back to look for the years.
Which house? Which house are you talking about?
205 Akron.
Lily. Lily.
Yeah, the old, no legendary.
And then next to it is a vacant lot that, that house was raised several years ago. And that is another Collins property, I believe, that had.
The one across the street from that one?
Across Akron, so it's on the, on the east side of Epispo.
Oh, does it, did it solve them Collins or?
Kate Marshall.
So directly across is 815 Epispo. It's owned by Sean Yount, it says. And he tore that house down, oh, must have been back in the fall.
It's not, yeah.
It's not a Collins.
The brown ones, I mean?
Yeah, the ones that had holes in the roof.
Yeah.
No.
And the back door was open.
Yeah.
I believe he was ordered to demolish that.
That, that one, I believe, has an Akron address. That's a vacant lot.
It does.
I'm talking about on the south side.
I know exactly where you're at.
On the north side of Akron, across, in the Munster House, I don't know what else to call it.
That's the one, it was a, perhaps. Yeah.
It is.
Who directed them to tear it down.
There are two vacant lots in this immediate quadrant. And both of them go neglected. And, and the realtor should be responsible for this. And maybe I should be calling Kate Marshall and saying.
Three, three of those are, or two of them at least are sale lots and definitely can be addressed tomorrow through ordinance and nuisance letters. I appreciate you bringing my attention. You've got it before.
I mean, it's, it's just, it's an aggregate here, and it's very frustrating. In addition to that, right in the middle of this, across the street from, from 821, in the middle of the street from 821 on Epispo and Munster House on Akron, you have a hole in the street. And I guess there was a water issue, or maybe they put in a new service. But they, they cut, I don't know, eight by eight or ten by ten piece of asphalt out and filled it with gravel, and now it's a hazard because the golf carts have to go around it. Because it's, it's now, there's.
The, the water supply for the, that new house that was built on the corner.
Yeah, they cut, they filled it with gravel.
It needs to be refilled.
Okay. I know exactly where you're at.
The other day.
And there are, there are a couple of those in that area. There's one at Epispo and Davis that I'm sure, sure they serviced the, whatever it was, infrastructure underneath it, but their plans for, for patching re-asphalting these sections, we just, I can think of three of them right in the area that, that had been cut out and not been put back.
We get the patching company coming in in the fall when we do the roads, and so, well, there's one on Davis Street there, but I'll go take a look at that and get Bob looking at least put some more fill in there to keep it from being so rough.
I mean, it's.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's, it's dangerous.
All things that need to be addressed, I appreciate it, unless that, not to get distracted, but start, start addressing them.
It's, you and I have talked. It's the broken windows.
Yeah, we have.
And I just see this getting worse in that area, and it's frustrating.
Well, for the unsafe building, we'd have to go to our unsafe, we'd have to have an unsafe building committee meeting. I don't, I think we kind of.
We have one.
They have one coming up in August 20. We do, and that's why I want, I'll take a ride with Steve and, and we'll get Bob down there, take a look at the streets. And in terms of the grass ordinances, there's a couple lots that I have on my list, right, for nuisances. And then the one on the corner where the wildflowers, I've knocked a couple times, haven't gotten anywhere because he hasn't been home, but I promise you I've knocked and I want to address that. So it is something that's on my list. And I've asked you to be patient, but I understand your frustration and I'm trying, we'll move this forward.
This has been two months now.
Yeah, it has been. I, I hear you. I do, I do.
Well, thank you very much. I'm sorry.
You guys were saying there's an unsafe building committee meeting, August 25th?
It's the last Thursday, the last meeting, the last Thursday meeting.
Yes.
Okay, this was technically the unsafe building committee, right? So it's 22nd, okay.
22nd, yes.
And the 808 South Epispo is, it's on.
Is there anyone on the line for?
I have one other thing, please.
Concern, utility ordinance violations?
Phil. I have one other thing, please.
All right, we'll go to public dialogue. Go ahead.
The tornado siren, is there an update on that?
Yeah, we addressed it today. If you didn't hear, there were some, some issues. We addressed it with Marshall County. They had to reprogram, but we tested all three today. So we tested the one up by Park and Shop, the one at the water plant, and the one here. All three went, and I really appreciate the public bringing it to our attention. It was on the computer end on Marshall County, and so we were able to address that, and that's not something we want to find out on the back end. So we definitely got it taken care of.
This was a result of the tornado warning we had a couple of weeks ago.
That's correct.
And there was a failure.
The township's kicked. One of ours kicked, but they didn't kick correctly. So we are tied into Marshall County. They're the ones that trigger it, and we are, we looked into it. Terry came up, Wakefield, and we coordinated with the county and had all three tested today, and it was a good thing we did.
And the normal course of events with a tornado is if there is a warning, where does it trigger?
Hey, okay, so Marshall County triggers, our, gets triggered from Marshall County. It's a three-minute siren. There are three located in town. One here at the office, one at Park and Shop on the north side, one at the water plant. There'll be a three, three-minute siren burst.
But so, so if you see on television or if you get on your cellphone a warning, that should simultaneously trigger that alarm?
If it hits on your cellphone, they're triggering it up there. We should be hearing sirens. That's my understanding of it. And again, that's coordinated through the county and Terry, and I learned a lot in talking with them, and that's my understanding of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing to our attention.
Anyone on the line for public dialogue? If not, new business, Pier B socket replacement contract.
I have an update for you on that. We're talking with Tim Yuhas currently, and Sean is, is writing a contract. We had budgeted money for the Pier B socket material. What I've asked him to do is pull that out as a separate estimate from what we had from Pier C, so we can get a precise number on that. He's going to provide us an estimate on the Pier C material as well as the labor. We are agreement that April 1st looks to be the completion date for those peers. We've also added a $3,500 penalty, flat penalty if the work is not done. We're waiting on those estimates. We should have that available for our first meeting next month. We were hoping to get it done this time, but we need those estimates to be spot on. And Tim's going to graciously provide those for us. So that's where we're at.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Old business, Lions Club.
Thank you for having us back. We do have a second estimate. And I don't know how to proceed. We've got two estimates. What do you, you want to know what they are?
Yes.
Don't read them out loud, yes. I'm wondering if, I don't know if you, so these aren't based on an RFQ or an RP, correct?
Right.
Did you guys have a list of like, or we want this, or this, or, or was it just tell us what it takes to replace this roof? Okay. Because my question to council, and I couldn't hear half the discussion when I was on the phone last, I couldn't hear Dana. So totally, fully engaged, but if it's our building, should we not be putting out the RFP, Sean?
My thoughts, exactly. We should, you know, we own the building, so why don't we get in the bids?
Well, I know that in the appendix for the 1995 original lease, it was stated that the Lions Club would take care of all of the repairs to the building. And the list that they gave at that time in the appendix, which is referred to in all of the other contracts that we've signed, goes back to that appendix, and it states that they'll, you know, re-ruff it. And I'm assuming that in 19, or 2021, or 2001, you said that the roof was about 20 years old? That the Lions Club paid to have it roofed last time?
The building turned.
It was great school.
So that was, my thought was because of that lease that I thought we could justify that not running it through the regular public works bidding process or, or quote process. And then their, their argument was, well, you know, it says ordinary wear and tear excluded or something as far as what they're not responsible for. Considering something like that, would the town be willing to make a contribution? So I, I think that you could, you know, just go off of their quotes, as long as you feel like they're apples to apples enough that, you know, we understand what, what, what they are getting, and then just consider it as a, a contribution to a nonprofit and allow them to contract with the, with the roofing contractors. I think that that, since they, it seems to be kind of a time-sensitive issue and they're wanting to get it done, that that seemed like a permissible way to go about.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it is apples to apples. Like, are they guaranteeing their work a certain amount of time or?
Forty-year warranty.
Both of them are. Both of them are, the two quotes?
Okay.
Because I was just thinking about, you know, when we put out the RFP, they have to be very specific about meeting what we're looking for and that sort of thing, so.
I got one question. Did y'all consider a, consider a metal roof?
The historic building.
Oh, you can't?
So it has to be maintained and it's historic.
Didn't know that. You answered the question, but it doesn't hurt to ask it. Thank you. Got it. Thanks, Mike.
It was considered.
Okay. I understand why. Thanks.
I would.
So what do I do? You want to know what our bump it is? If we're willing to go with, that compares to the higher bid, or? What's the process?
Well, normally, and I thought this was explained at the last meeting, that you bring us the bid a week prior to the meeting. So that we can.
When we had meeting, we could make a decision.
We can, yeah, ahead of the meeting rather than just, because normally if you just hand them to us, we take it under advisement and it'll be at the next board meeting.
Just like any bid, like for streets, work or anything? But.
Is there a big difference?
Fall rainy season, we get our roof done.
No, I'm, no, we, well, we understand time is the essence. I get that.
Is there a big difference on these two bids?
Not any. About $2,500, $3,500 difference. And this one came in.
Yeah, the guy, I got.
I never got.
They came down to Neverset, had a bid. Yeah. And then bid, so I got a couple guys from Rochester to come up and.
Okay.
This is the one that compares to that.
So what are you, what's?
This is the bid you want to go with.
Oh. Then I suppose like. Yeah. Any more than.
There were a lot of things included that we just, so.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, I wish, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you got you.
Pass that around and let people look at it.
First principle.
I have a question. Is the town going to pay for this? Is that what you're considering here?
Yes.
But we've talked about.
Or a portion of that.
A portion of that all.
So the bid, just to let you know, the bid that I saw was at least twice that amount.
Almost three times.
Yeah.
You talking about the low, the low one?
The, the first bid that I was provided, which I'm not sure, I'm not sure where, it was emailed to me, a, a cost was emailed to me. Don't know that I saw the actual bid. It was, yeah, way more than that. That's much more reasonable and that's less.
That's satisfied with what?
It was less than what you guys were ready to approve last week.
It was, okay. You answered that question. Thank you.
But I was, I was asking you for it, and then, you know, I wish I would have gotten it. Of course, I could provide that information to the council.
So Karen, normally when we do a contribution to a nonprofit, we have to have that worked out agreement where we provide you this amount of money in return you provide a service. They obviously provide a service to the community, but this is such a specific thing. Do we basically say, we provide this contribution in return, you put a roof on our building? Kind of agreement? Either that or we just pay the contract?
I guess my question, you know.
That might be simpler for you.
There's no question that it's a.
They gave us three different quotes based on materials.
Yeah.
This is not part of the bid.
Okay.
So this is what this bid actually is from this company. And it's.
And that's, but the total here is twice that.
Right, because we pulled this out of it.
Oh, okay. You pulled that.
Trying to figure out how to.
Got you.
Yes, yes.
I got you. That's part I didn't understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the number I had heard was their most expensive. Yeah.
Until we had a second bid to compare with, we didn't.
Yeah.
Know where to fall.
Yeah.
And I'm glad your job on the beach lodge worked out okay, because he did not respond to us.
Question?
Craig at 522 South Main. My question's for Sean. Sean, is there anything in the ordinances or town bylaws that prevent the town from paying 100% of this repair that are towning good? What would keep you from paying all of it? It's normal wear and tear. It's time for a new roof. If Annette wasn't here and Mike wasn't here, what?
Well, I think we would, and, and, you know, I have not reviewed this, this lease that we're talking about, but I think we fall back on the lease and say, those are all of them. Yeah, but it's, you know, it may be their responsibility under the, the terms of the lease, but I can, I can see what you're saying. Normal wear and tear, you know, could, could cover this potentially.
I think. Revenue-wise, how do you do renting that space? Revenue-wise, how do you guys do with renting that space?
We rent it.
Is it a significant revenue or is it just kind of?
It makes the utilities.
That's, that's my question, like. So it contributes to some of the maintenance? Okay.
You did some work in the kitchen too, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That was a special donation.
Oh, okay.
Specifically.
Somebody, okay.
Well, I, I'm leaning toward a motion that would be how we handle other nonprofits. So we get council and aging funds for service. We give CYC for service. Trying to think if there's visitor center for service, sometimes for product as well, if it's a producing product. And I, I realize a lot of the visitor centers funding comes through CRC and not through the town council, but I'm leaning toward treating it the same way, that we make a contribution with the Lions Club because they provide a service that's important to the community. What that amount is, I don't know. I'm leaning toward 10,000 of the 14, whatever. Does anyone else lean any certain way?
I, I would be fine with 10, 10,000 toward it.
Oh, I, I don't know all the conversation from last time, because I heard pieces, but was it a percentage you were looking at or was it an amount?
We didn't know because we didn't have any other bid to look at.
Okay.
So it was.
But the percentage you were thinking was based on a much higher number, right?
Oh, definitely.
Correct, and that number was higher than what this bid is.
Right.
The proposed percentage was around 50%, if I remember correctly. And that 50% of what the, the unspoken bid was.
Would have covered all of.
Would have covered all of this.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, right. Because we never talked.
It must have been a much larger bid.
Must have been. We'll make a motion then, I think.
So where would those funds come from? Capital improvements, CCD?
There's the, there's either the CCD fund or there's another capital improvement fund that we get. Either way, we'll need to do an additional preparation to cover it, but.
Okay, if that original percentage would have been far more than the 14, what's that?
Four. 14, 14, 14, five.
Okay, then I'm comfortable with the full bill, but.
Yeah.
I don't know what the conversation really was, no.
I think, I think everybody had a.
I know what the audience already thinks, Craig. Just, you can stop. For me, it's not an issue of it's our building, because there's an agreement in place. This, we handle nonprofits differently than we do a regular bill. So that's where I'm coming from. I don't, I'm not taking those issues into account. I understand them. I get where you guys are coming from. For me, we have to be consistent how we treat the nonprofits, because it's a nonprofit operating out of one of our buildings. We don't have other nonprofits operating out of our buildings. Unless someone's renting the beach lodge or they're renting the depot, in a way, you're renting our building for the cost of maintaining it, utilities, et cetera. So that's kind of how I look at it. It's, it's a lot different than how we normally handle a nonprofit. So for me, it's just, let's figure out what the contribution is, and then they can handle their vendors, et cetera, and what they want to do.
I think that's probably from a legal perspective, the cleanest way to handle it, to justify not having the, the town not going through a normal quote process to, to just treat it as a contribution to the nonprofit and then let them contract would, would even know it might complicate the, the payment, but it probably would be cleaner that.
Bill, what are you comfortable with? What amount?
Well, when somebody else comes to us for a contribution, we don't, we honor what they ask for, but it's, you know.
It's just.
It's just, I don't want to say it's a pittance, but it's not a big amount.
Yeah.
And so I'm, I understand where you might be coming for all of it, but I also think, you know, maybe we should require a little skin in the game, and so 10, I don't have a problem with 10. I'm either way.
What about you guys?
I'm good with 10.
So, okay, I'll keep my original motion on the floor.
All right, would you, Ms. Moreau?
Yeah, I was.
Bring your motion, please.
We make a $10,000 contribution to the Lions Club. That's to be used specifically for the, the roof repair. How that's handled on the back end with the clerk, I think should be up to the clerk. But my suggestion is the 10,000.
So this is the actual price, right?
That's actually that one right there.
Mike, are you happy with that?
So. So this number is the actual bid for this material.
That's the.
You pass that back.
Hi, Ms. Moreau has moved for 10,000. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Rouchardi. Any further discussion?
I'm a Lions Club member, so.
I'm a Lions Club member, so I'm staying on the vote.
Pardon?
A Lions Club member, so I should probably even stay on the vote.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Can we be in trouble with that?
Don't be group, you keep pushing it.
We're gonna have one.
Have to ask a different group, I guess.
Takes care of the rope.
Thank you.
All right, you're more than welcome.
You're welcome.
Warden Commissioners report.
I have a review. I am a building commissioner's report to be read from Steve. Uh, June twenty twenty four, building permits applied for eight in June, eleven in May, and fourteen in April. July is trending similar to June. Fees for building permits and improvement location applications. Culver received one thousand twenty dollars in June, three thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty cents in May, and two thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars in April. Zoning ordinance update. Jeanette Sarisi's appointment is judge. I understand Sean will take over working on our zoning ordinance updates. Congratulations to Jeanette. All dessert. Um, unsafe structures. Speaking up. Board is scheduled to meet August twenty second. This is for the two thirteen South Plate Street Garage, pending another possible. The owner has obtained a demolition permit. If that demolition is completed prior to the scheduling meeting, the meeting will be canceled pending on what Steve and I do next week. Solar battery ordinance team meet July sixteenth and is making good progress and should have a draft of the ordinance to present to the planning commission later this year. Like to throw Steve a bone, and he's done an excellent job writing, uh, an ordinance that makes sense. T R C met once in July to hear, uh, one case. The planning commission did not meet in June due to no cases to hear. The B Z A had one case for a variance of development in June that was approved. The B Z A has five cases for August, and Steve will be on vacation, in case you're wondering, August second through August eleventh, and that is the building commissioner report.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Redevelopment Commission, Sally.
Uh, basically, it was a relatively short meeting. Discussed financial report. We have basically one hundred and fifteen thousand discretionary balance. The rest of it's committed to, um, loan payments. Not loan payments.
Bond payments?
Bond payments. Get the word correct. I knew when it came out, it was wrong. And, and other commitments that we have. Erica James is moving out of the town limits. And so she is resigning affected this meeting that we had today. And that we need to advertise or look for a new member to take her place. She was going to keep us appraised of a couple of people that she thought could be interested in it. She's going to speak with. And, uh. Amber Cowell gave us a briefing on the Lake Fest and the success of the Lake Fest. Yeah, did I forget anything?
No, that's.
Done, all right.
Thank you. Tree Commission, anyone here to report on the tree commission?
I do have a little bit. We're trimming. If you haven't noticed, in town, we're gonna be picking up, uh, tomorrow. Thank goodness, we got some summer help. Uh, also heard back from IU, and we are on the top of the list, uh, for next year's program with Plumbeth again. Uh, so they're gonna honor that, and they're honoring at the same price that the sisters paid. Once again, we thank the sisters out of Encilla. Um, but we're looking at fifty trees again, and things are going good with the tree removal as well. Get some trees out, some stumps. So, uh, really happy with the progress around town, our first tree.
Okay.
Want more, don't you? You want that?
Town manager report, sir.
I have a special permit I'm requesting from the fire department, seven twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, seven A M. to ten P M. We have downstairs tree and firehouse. It's their carnival. Um, there, there will be no alcohol served, and there is no sound equipment. Uh, no anticipated number of people. It's a big event, like your approval. Good, sir?
Motion to approve the, uh, fire department Fire Fest.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Githens, second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Sharty. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Okay.
No signature necessary for this, but I'd like the council's permission to advertise the job description for, for our park superintendents. Worst kept secret Culver is Amber's leaving us and didn't want to announce it last meeting because she was waiting on that, but um, obviously, it's gonna be hard to replace Amber, but no better person write the job description than Amber herself. We sat down and edited, uh, very happy with it. It details the administration, the management, uh, communications, the marketing, participation. It, it helps us manage our fest, our, our responsibilities to the beach. Obviously, Amber has evolved the position in her time here, and we expect the person that comes in to be able to pick that back up and to help continue that growth. We're looking at a salary of fifty thousand on the application. At least that's what we're gonna list. Um, uh, title will be park superintendent. I ask council's permission if I can advertise this position.
Would you approve the application?
This one, Monroe moves to advertise the, excuse me, advertise the position.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Githens. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Last order of business that I have is coming from Troyer. Um, it deals with our, uh, Cass Street sidewalk program. That's the phase three program that we've had approved. And that has been coupled also with the, uh, phase three bike and shared path that's going out there by the academy. Um, Troyer needed our signatures, uh, recommendation, I guess, uh, for the E R C. The plans have been out there. They're there. I'm gonna have them on file in my office. If you want to stop, it's a, it's a formality, but it does require each of the council's signature, and I ask for those signatures tonight, please.
So moved. It's been moved by Mr. Githens, seconded by Mr. Troyer. Seconded by.
Yeah, I just need you to.
Who was the second?
Me.
Miss Monroe, second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
I just got you all in one room. That's all I needed. Figured that one was coming. You just, oh, cop copy? Yes, no. Oh, no, there's two. Is there, is there a second copy to that one? Yeah, it should be, because I think they're individual. Okay, thank you for picking it up.
I get it all the way back.
There you go. We'll stall while these guys are signing, um.
Do you have a question if I can enter in again?
Kind of the star of the show, but I'll let you have some time with me. What do you got?
When you authorize, um, live music. Is there a sound ordinance that comes into play with that?
For the festival, there's a sound ordinance, but with the festival, I agree, we talked about that. It was, it's a location thing. It's something that we talked, uh, Andrea and I talked about. Um, we're probably planning that a little better for you guys next year. I know exactly what you mean because I was sitting right by you. Um, on those lines, though, everything else I felt in terms of the fest was, was really nice time. We had a really strong EMS presence and with the fire department up there. Um, it was nice to see them in the same tent, working together, um, distributing materials and just being with the community. I think Amber and her crew, everybody did a great job. Andrea did a wonderful job. Um, it's, it's always kind of neat to watch Wayne and, and the whole police force up there and, and Bob and their crew helping out too. It's, it's a good time, and you realize how good a people you got, so appreciate that. Been driving through town. The grass is growing quicker and quicker and quicker. Um, the, this rain has been pretty tough, so we're uh, working through some things. I've been knocking on doors, trying to work with people on grass, but it's getting letter time, as was pointed out earlier in our meeting tonight, um, so I'll be working on those letters and sending them out. Uh, other than that, I think that's gonna be it for the managers notes tonight.
Thank you.
There, sir.
Karen, works report.
We have a couple of claims over twenty-five hundred for your approval. Travelers R and D, three thousand eight hundred and seven, three thousand eighty-seven dollars. And that is environmental, well, policy, barking dog interpretive design incorporated, five thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-two cents. That is for the storyboards. Um, a good portion of that money was needed, uh, from the Lions Club and the Culver Union Township Public Library. Um, I've got two for Wild and Humphrey, Cleavage and Cerise, seven thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, and those are for legal fees. Um, Dartwood Hill Tree Farm, seven thousand eight forty-four fifty. I think you guys already approved this one, but just in case. Those are for the new trees that were planted. And then Craig Howard, uh, Treelancers, nine thousand five hundred dollars, and that is for the tree removal that is taking place. Motion to approve the claims.
Miss Monroe moves to approve the, approve the claims as a second. Seconded by Mr. Neer. Any further discussions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Just to make it on the formal agenda, but, um, I did distribute the name and financial reports to have it after your approval of both of those.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Sharty, seconded by Miss Monroe. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Budget meetings, I did send an email out, heard from a couple of people. Um, but it looks like August the seventh and eighth, they'll work out, um, one of, uh, at five P M. Wednesday, August seventh, we'll try to do the town departments meeting. Um, those departments that don't have funds contributed to them from the the township, um, and then we'll do fire EMS and park on Thursday, and hopefully we can get those all out of the way before the sixth. This Thursday also five P M.? Yes, both at five, and also the, I know it's out tomorrow. And then, uh, uh, under redevelopment, Sally mentioned that Erica James is, is moving out of town. Um, it, the position is a council president appointment. Um, is it something where you want to put the, do you want me to publicize that and ask for applications? And if so, what deadline would you like to have?
It's a good question.
Yes, more question for you, Bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'd put it out, Karen.
Okay, what date? What deadline date would you like to have on there? Your next council meeting is August eighth. The next redevelopment commission is prior to the second meeting in August on the twenty-second.
What about the fifteenth?
Yeah, fifteenth, be good.
So we're gonna have a special meeting?
Oh, we're just accepting applications. You, that's application deadline.
Okay, that I was trying to ask, when did you want to make your decision?
Be on the twenty-second.
Okay, so you're gonna, they'll have a meeting with, with four members and then they'll be in place by seven.
I mean, yeah.
And then finally, um, I just want to ask permission to dispose of the next telephone system that we've had in this building for like ever, and it's just taking up a quarter of a room. Um, so if I can get permission to. So moved.
You're gonna have a party when you guys miss that? That's right.
Think you, think you got a historical building.
I don't, I don't believe that it has any substantial value.
No.
So it's not likely you have to do anything with it other than deep six it.
It's a pain to get rid of it.
Yeah.
Anita, if you could announce that as deep six on the radio, I would pay you, I'll take you to dinner.
All right, Miss Monroe.
Black and white.
Move.
Again.
Seconded by Mr. Githens. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Okay, thank you very much. Sean, Attorney's Report.
Legal, but just Karen made me think of the storyboards in the park look really nice. I like those.
Yeah, spiffy, and they're easier to install pages on. We're very happy about that.
But of course, the one fallen tree fell.
Uh, it lasted not even a week.
Mr. Neer, do you have any issues?
Other than in twenty-eleven and twenty-twelve, I came to council asking approval for the brand new Lake Max Triathlon. It was approved since then, it's become kind of like the rest of the festivals, right? It just happens every year. Uh, is there any sort of discussion that you need? It's August tenth. You just do it every year. We, Wayne's involved and.
Yeah, I think, I think you fill out a permit that just shows what roads you're. I was seeing it at one. Yeah.
I had to do with the Lions Club last night, giving a free registration.
Okay.
Bill, get free registration to the triathlon. Lead the way.
I will.
Yeah, technically, we need to just motion to approve the triathlon permit that's about to be filled out. Because we don't have another.
You need this special permit that Dana's gonna fill out?
Yeah.
And it's signatures while it's, and approve at the next meeting? Yes.
Post.
Close the room. Yeah. I've done it for ten years.
Is there?
Near, near Sierra Valley, damn it.
Oh, okay, we meet on the eights here.
Yeah, we're okay. We'll get, we'll get that. Yeah, don't see me do.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Miss Monroe.
I, nothing.
Mr. Sharty.
I don't get anything.
I have nothing, Mr. Githens.
Talking, you know, we all talked about how well Lake Fest went and how, how well the employees did. I can't tell you the number of, uh, comments I got about apartment and Tracy was working and how well she worked the community and meeting people and talk to them. I've had a lot of comments. People, I know we think Tracy talks too much, but she's out there and she's, you know, really engaged, engaged in, in the, but the public loves that. It's a little bit different from some other people in that department.
I'm gonna go on record and say Chad is very popular with plus six.
All right.
I may have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Githens, second.
Aye.
By Miss Monroe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.